Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVeert.
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Tim Pusey with the Valley Shepherd Church of the Nazarene. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for the freedoms we have as citizens of this great country. And we thank you for our city and for the many, many ways in which you have blessed the city of Meridian. And we thank you for our leaders, those who serve us, city councilmen and women, and for our mayor and for the many servants of this city who keep our streets safe and our homes secure. Lord, we pray your blessing on them. And, Lord, we're reminded in your word that you instruct us that if we want wisdom, we're to turn to you. And so tonight, in this brief moment at the beginning of this meeting, we turn to you and we seek your wisdom and guidance. I pray, Lord, for your wisdom for our council and any and all of the deliberations that they're doing. And, Lord, may they have calm minds and calm hearts as they debate significant, important issues for our community. And, Lord, may we always be mindful of the less fortunate in our community who so much need acts of love and kindness. We pray, Father, for your blessing upon this meeting tonight and upon this community and tonight and in the days ahead. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have two items from the consent that are going to be moved to item seven. We pull in item E, six E and six L from the consent, move them to item seven. So with those amendments, I would move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, any sign-ups under item five?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one sign-up, it looks like Andy Seale signed up, but I believe he is here for an item later on your agenda, which is item eight A, so that was the only sign-up this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
With item six E and L having been removed, I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda before we moved to item eight.
Madam Mayor.
There were two.
There were two.
I'm sorry. There were two. I know, I had one.
Autopilot.
Yes, autopilot. Okay. Do I turn this over to?
I believe Ms. Allen will address the final plat.
Sonia, if you can kick us off in the discussion on item six E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Cavanagh Estates East, number three. The applicant brought up a concern here just a couple hours ago that needed to be addressed in the staff report, so I revised it to just add a couple tweaks to it. And the applicant did submit a response in agreement to the revised staff report. So unless you want me to go into the final plat, I can do that if you'd like, but otherwise, the applicant is in agreement.
Counsel, would you like further information?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just a kind of a quick summary of what was the concern and what was the fix.
The concern was, is there is a buildable lot in the final plat that the applicant wishes to have as a developer-owned private park slash open space. I added a condition of approval. The applicant was concerned that the amount of buildable lots would throw them over the number of buildable lots approved with the preliminary plat because they added this lot. We did speak with the applicant, staff did a while back about this very thing, and determined that we would handle it kind of like a common lot, but it wouldn't count towards their buildable residential lots. So I did include a condition in the staff report for a note to be added to the plat that this particular lot be prohibited from having a single-family residential home on it so that they wouldn't exceed their number of buildable lots.
Any further information needed on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item seven A now. The final plat for Cavanagh Estates, H. 2018-0132, to reflect the modified staff report as referenced by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the original, item six E. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay, also move from the consent agenda was item six L.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, forgive me while I try to model through some comments here. I've got a nasty cold and it is really affecting my ability to think and speak and walk straight. I can drive okay, though. But the reason I ask for this to be removed from the consent agenda is just for item number one on the subrecipient agreement list, the Idaho County Housing Authority Agreement for $30,000. The purpose of this $30,000 is to provide funds for people who don't have them, for down payment assistance to purchase a home. I feel that the practice of providing cash for a down payment for a home purchase is immoral as it can put people who haven't prepared sufficiently or are not in a position to be able to purchase a home into a situation where the idea of a home can be exciting and is a goal worthy of attaining and working towards, but it can turn what would be believed to be a blessing into a curse, making it so that people can be overextended and get into a situation that they might not, probably shouldn't have gotten into by, again, not preparing sufficiently or being in a position to be able to afford a home. So whether it's tax dollars or not, whether even if it's people privately doing it, I live in a world of loaning money to people who've struggled financially. And we found time and time again that when dad, mom, brother, sister, cousin loans or gives money to somebody for their down payment for their car, that loan is almost entirely doomed to fail because there's no sense of ownership. There's no preparation that took place for that person to secure their own down payment. And it just doesn't work. And so rather than take our citizens' dollars and give them to other people who aren't in a position to be able to handle what they're going to be doing with it, I think isn't the right move. But I would love to see this money moved instead into a streetlight project that has been a success with much of these dollars over the years. I may be alone up here if that's the case, that's fine. But I'd really rather not see these funds go to that.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Hood or Mr. Neary, I believe that there are certain criteria that dollars are to be allocated towards with this and a plan that's been approved. Is there concern to removing this and reallocating it?
Well, Madam Mayor, excuse me. My concern would be the action plan that's been adopted by you all and now by HUD. And this is really ratifying the previous decision. What Mr. Palmer brings up certainly is possible, although, again, this has been already vetted through the public hearing process and these subrecipients have been put on notice that to expect to receive these funds, again, this is the kind of the point of no return. So there is, but that process, again, if we were going to do streetlights, additional streetlights, that should have been the motion when we're coming up with the action plan and allocating dollars. But, again, it's not too late to do that. If that is what a majority of council wants to do, it's possible. But, again, all things up to this point have been pointing towards the allocation that you can see on your agenda tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
And I believe that we're not here symbolically, that we're here with a decision in front of us because it's never too late to make the right choice. And so while it may cause heartburn or extra work, I, just like, I'll not vote for a tax increase, no matter how many times it ends up on the agenda and how many times it still gets a majority, if it still ends up on my agenda, I'm still going to vote against it. So that's why I brought it up here again today.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I believe that the program exists for a reason and it helps people who have been maybe struggling or they can't come up with an entire, the whole down payment. I don't look at this as a handout, but a hand up. And certainly, it's not enough funds to give many people an entire down payment. If they were going to not be able to pay a loan back, they wouldn't qualify for the loan from the bank. So I look at this differently.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, are there any other comments before I call Mr. Palmer? Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Caleb, if you don't mind answering a question. Did I understand you right that the families have already been selected and vetted out? Okay. But there is quite a vetting process before it gets to that, correct?
Sure, Madam Mayor, if I could just clarify what, I'm talking about the subrecipient. So the people that are actually going to be managing the grant have been led to believe they're getting $30,000 to then distribute to families that qualify. But no, the families, they're in the process of identifying those and moving forward with spending, but I don't believe they've spent any of these funds ahead of tonight, so.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, follow-up. One of the things we keep hearing is that our housing prices, because we are doing so well, are going up and we are squeezing the people that need this type of assistance out. And so I agree with Councilman Mylum that it's a help up, not a handout, and would like to see us go ahead.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, to those points, I look at credit reports every day. And so many of them will be people who are in a position to, you know, fill out enough forms where you get enough grants for your down payment. You get, you know, not enough, certainly, being a single, one family selected to receive some money out of this program. But then you fill out another form and you get Idaho Housing to give you a loan on your down payment. So then you're borrowing on a down payment, so you've got two payments. And then somebody else, and somebody else throws in. And that stuff doesn't go away in a foreclosure. The bank might still approve it because they got enough money in a down to know that if they have to foreclose and sell the house, that they're going to get their money back. So that's why they get approved. But at the end of the day, even in a foreclosure, all those other loans, which I understand this is not that case, but that they had to get for their down payment, those don't go away. And those become what shows up on the credit report, what turns into judgments, what turns into garnishments, which turns into having to get a car loan from me at 30% interest, which is not a good position to be in. So I even, I don't want to be up here forcing people to have to be in a position to have to come to me to get a car loan, is what I'm trying to say, I guess. So it sounds like I'm probably alone, but that's fine. I just will be able to sleep at night knowing that I wasn't part of it.
Okay, any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just to not have silence imply any agreement, I do disagree. I appreciate and understand the background that you're coming from, but I strongly disagree that it would be immoral to provide financial assistance and premature to judge the program and how the Housing Authority administers it without speaking to the individual recipients and what they go through and how it's specifically vetted. I'm not saying some of your conclusions are wrong, but I certainly can't say they're right without having that type of background data. But I'm aware of this program and how it is more thoroughly vetted than perhaps you may believe and is about as far from immoral as you could get for these families who are trying to make ends meet. So I'm supportive of it. It's consistent with our existing plan and perhaps a broader discussion on some of your concerns can be had later.
Anything further? We do need to take action on this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Move we approve item seven B, subrecipient agreement for program year 2018 for the CDBG funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the original six L, the seven B. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. I would like to welcome our Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts in the audience. We always love to see our Scouts earning their Communications Badge. Very good. Well, thank you for joining us and good luck. Item eight A, under Community Presentations, we have Resolution 19-2125. This resolution is to reappoint Rhonda McCarville to seat one and to appoint Andy Seale to seat three and Reed Olson to seat four of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission. And it does provide an effective date. Our Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jessica and I, conducted interviews and are proud to bring these names in front of you this evening and would stand for any questions. I do have at least one of the two new ones here, and I will ask him to come forward and I'll introduce him to you, but I would stand for any questions. If there aren't any questions, we entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
We approve Resolution number 19-2125.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item eight A. If there's no questions, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you, counsel. We do have Andy Seale with us this evening. Andy, would you like to introduce yourself up here at the podium? We certainly appreciate your willingness to delve into the world of planning and zoning and your desire to serve our community.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate being brought on board and hope to do great things and see the city continue to prosper and grow. And hopefully, we can get a handle on, you know, everything that's going on there. And I look forward to being a part of that.
And Andy has a background, and I believe that you've seen his paperwork that he submitted. He has an eye for detail, and we thought that Andy would be a great replacement to Stephen Yearsley, who just stepped off, who was an engineer, as you all know him. And we do feel that the skills that Andy brings will help bring some of that perspective that we lost with Stephen. So thank you for your willingness to serve.
You're very welcome.
Madam Mayor, you're welcome.
Hold on, yes, Mr. Burnt.
Andy, congratulations.
Thank you.
This is big shoes to fill. Commissioner Yearsley has been on that commission for many, many years and has been a strong leader on that commission for a long time. So just wanted to say on the record, I appreciate how I am of Commissioner Yearsley and the years of service, also grateful for you and for your willingness to serve. But I don't want to put you on the spot, but what made you want to do it?
I just felt it was time to take a bigger role and serve in my community. So, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that are still sitting on the sidelines, and I felt that it was my turn to step up and take a role.
Love that.
Thank you for joining us, Andy.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, yes, last week was the last meeting for both Stephen Yearsley and Greg Wilson. And so Reed and Andy will be stepping in at the next Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm sure we'll benefit from talking with staff and be being brought up to, not brought up to speed. Yeah, I think that will take a little while, but we'll have the benefit of meeting with staff and getting set up. So thank you so much again, Andy, for joining us today. Okay, item eight B is continued conversation on the vehicle sharing program. And I will turn this over to Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Emily Kane, Deputy City Attorney in the City Attorney's Office. As the mayor mentioned, this is an ongoing conversation about a draft vehicle sharing program ordinance that I brought to you January 8th. I'm following up on the great feedback that you gave me that day. Just to quickly touch on the objectives, the first two we discussed at your workshop a few weeks ago, our goals include balancing public safety, but also making this idea happen in Meridian, facilitating the micro-mobility transportation concept. Adding to the list, some of the things that we talked about last time, there was pretty clear consensus that we need to minimize our administrative workflow and the resources that staff invests in making this work. We need to make our operators and riders accountable for how it plays in Meridian. We need to balance our supply of the shared vehicles with the demand and kind of look at that as we progress in this initial year, as we move forward. So specifically, some of the updates in the draft that I incorporated, I changed the number of vehicles deployed initially to 350. That goes somewhat with the structure of the franchise fee that I'll get to in a moment. We talked about the number of franchises available. This draft reflects that two franchisees would be, two franchises would be available in the city. We didn't talk about specifically about beacons, but I did receive some feedback about that. And actually, I noticed in this draft that I shared with you a mistake. It's a benefit of the long weekend and some fresh eyes. On page eight, section 363F, where it actually talks about the beacons, it does still sound like they're mandatory, but that's not the intent. So I'd, in the, I guess, hopefully, final draft, I would add, if the operator uses the beacons, then the operator would provide that electronic interface that would let the city know where they are and let the city weigh in on maybe some ideas where they would be useful. So to clarify that, the beacons, the intent is that if they are available, if they're offered by the operator, that may be used as a designated parking spot. We talked about the fee for, that the city could charge if the city were required to get involved to remove the shared vehicle and store it, either a police or possibly Parks Department doing that. The fee we discussed was 250. There was at least a majority that thought that would work, so this draft does reflect that. This draft on the franchise fee, I incorporated a flat annual fee of $25,000. This roughly approximates kind of a full-time employee, certainly on the lower end. But this is also kind of close to, it kind of is in the neighborhood of a 30 cents per scooter per day if there are 350 scooters, and we assume kind of a season. So if there's an eight-month season where people are actually using these scooters, that is a rough approximation of 30 cents per scooter per day. Or if we look at the whole year, which maybe this winter, we could use the scooters all year, 20 cents per scooter per day, it's about $25,000. If you use the other, the per-ride model, where we assume three rides per day, it approximates a 10 cent per ride. If there are 350 scooters at three rides a day, for a seasonal, 240 days, it's about $25,000 or seven cents for year-round. It's, you end up with fractions of a cent. So rather than do lots of math, I just left the actual number. So about seven cents is roughly approximate, a little bit more than the proposed flat fee. The benefit of the flat fee is that it achieves that goal of minimizing staff involvement in collecting it and calculating it and verifying that fee. The thing to remember about franchise fees is it is a contractual amount. It's not a fee in the classic sense. We've heard over and over again that fees really approximate the service that the city provides. That's almost always true. This is the exception. The word "fee" is used, but it's really consideration for the value of what the contracting party is getting. In this case, the right to use the streets and the sidewalks. So they're adding a use to public infrastructure for private gain. And in return, the city, one, doesn't operate a competing service and, two, allows that to happen and facilitates that with this oversight. So, and I guess it's streets, sidewalks, pathways and parks. So this $25,000 is intended to kind of represent that, the value of that right. It really is on the low end, both as to other cities and as we're looking at calculating that in comparison to other, in the context of other models. But it is the initial year, and as we've discussed and as you provided your feedback, January 8th, it's really, we need more data. We need to know more about the impact that this would provide. Having that money ahead of time, it also achieves the goal of having a resource, a ready resource available in the event that we do need to invest resources, either in repairing or maintaining public infrastructure or public safety issues, oversight, taking public feedback about this. And in the event that it's not used, it does offer a way to invest back into that infrastructure. We took away the requirement that the city reinvested and we took away the, one draft had kind of percentages to say this amount went to each of these things. But it is there to do, to do just that, to make the infrastructure grow and be improved for the riders and also other pedestrians and users of this resource. So, long story about franchise fees. The final thing I'll mention in this draft, you provided some feedback to say that the speed limits in parks and the geo-fences in parks should be on the riders, that the riders should be ultimately responsible for that. This draft reflects that feedback, but it also, I kept in the requirement that the operator control that remotely and use geo-fencing and govern the speeds remotely. And that is the, I brought that back because that's the recommendation of the Parks Commission. That's the input that we received from our public on that. And Director Steve Sidaway is here to talk more about that if you'd like. So with that, are there any questions or other feedback?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I do have some notes, and thanks for that detailed, the detailed information that you provided for us. Went through it and have some questions. You answered most of them, good job. One of the things that I was, that we spoke about was the $250 and having that be collected if, I guess we give the scooter company two hours' notice. Is that, if I'm remembering correctly, we let them know that maybe a scooter's parked in the wrong spot or whatever. We give them notice and they have two hours. Or, but then I read something later on in the paragraph that says they have upwards of 72 hours to actually grab. And if they don't grab within that 72-hour timeframe, that we go collect and charge them 250 bucks. All right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, yes, we, they have two hours to respond and take care.
Respond.
Yes, and so the, I should say the operators have two hours to respond and move a vehicle that's not where it's supposed to be. To, the 72 hours is really to, intended to address a scooter that is lawfully parked, but just sits there. So if, it's hard to imagine a scenario where it would be so in the way that we would really want to wait that long to move it. But that allows us to move basically abandoned scooters. And the, there is a provision that says that in exigent circumstances, the police can move the scooters, or it actually just says the city can remove them. So if a city staff member, police officer happens upon a scooter in the road or blocking the sidewalk or something where it's unsafe, or it's prohibiting other uses, then they could just remove that if necessary. Again, the police really, they're, the intention is that they will write the scooter and lawfully park it rather than take custody of it. But in, if that is what needs to happen, if there's no other way to deal with it, then that's an option available to them.
Okay, makes sense. And so my second question is, it's not really a question, I guess, but there was a lot of information in, in your report saying, you know, about the operation, the parking requirements and usage requirements of the citizens that will be riding on them. So what are we gonna, I know this wouldn't be part of an ordinance, but just a question about, what would we be doing as a city to help educate people so they know what our expectations are while they're utilizing these, these scooters? So that we can minimize the, the tickets that could be, you know, just so they know what, how to ride them and how the, you know, the safety precautions and such.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton, I guess I, I don't have handy, any details about a public education plan, but I know that is part of the plan. So there will be outreach to let people know. I know social media is going to be part of it. But certainly, we've learned that the city needs to really be proactive in reaching out to the public and helping educate the public. It's, of course, it's on the operators as well, and that benefits them and their business model. But it's, the city will do something. I guess I just don't have specifics of that plan. There's, I have kind of a proposed next steps in public outreach and education. There's a two-week dedicated portion. I know that's, it won't be confined to that, but that's maybe an opportunity to sort of roll it out. And, you know, that's something, actually, that's something we're very, really very good at. Casey Emery is just kind of the master of getting the word out. So I know that that's, that will happen.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Emily, great work. Appreciate this. Appreciate coming and kind of doing a status check with council and then bringing us this back. I do have a couple of questions, just some clarification pieces. On, where did the, you kind of touched on the genesis of the $25,000 franchise fee. That's not something we had really discussed, if I recall. It's kind of the set fee last time you were here. Can you help me understand where that came from and ultimately why it's being recommended?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kavner, it's, you're right, I didn't discuss it last time. That was a product of the clear consensus that we really wanted to keep administrative costs low. It's, it's definitely convenient and, and easy for everyone to understand. It requires no calculations. It doesn't require us to invoice or ask really for that money. If anything, we would ask for it in July, just as a reminder, maybe. I'd rather just leave it on the operator to pay what they owe. But it really is an attempt to incorporate a franchise fee that's both fair, but also it gets done. Having that upfront fee without any calculation, that is also has that nexus to what we're really trying to do, to make that consideration reflect what it's worth and have that nexus to, you know, other methods that have been used in other circumstances in other cities. I think it's, it's a model that would work for us to achieve all of those goals.
Madam Mayor, Paul. If I remember seeing in here, it follows the calendar year. So I guess it's kind of a two-part question. We're, we're a few weeks into January. Is the intent that if we have two operators that come forth, that it's going to be a prorated amount? And then I guess the second question B is, what happens if we have an operator who isn't acting above board? As an action of the clerk's office, we revoke their ability to operate. Are we then in the business of cutting them a prorated refund?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kavner, as to your first question regarding prorating the franchise fee for the initial year, that's not something honestly that I had thought of. If this does follow this timeline that I've outlined and starts in March, they would essentially be missing two months of their year. So you could direct that we've prorated minus two months. The, the ordinance does not reflect that, but your adoption of the franchise ordinance could incorporate that direction. As to revocation, it is a non-refundable franchise fee. That's part of the reason that I think it's a good idea to split it into two payments because it is really, I think it would disincentivize revocation if we felt that we essentially owed them the benefit of their bargain. So I think having that, it really, it's still a contract. So, you know, if they pay their consideration and don't uphold their end of the contract, contract theory tells us that it's just over, you, you're out. So it's, but having it broken into two, that there would be essentially a decision point in July if that were a concern. I don't, we're honest brokers. I don't see us revoking on July 2nd. But certainly, if that happened, we'd be legally okay. I really don't think that in practice that is going to happen. However, if it does, they'd lose six months essentially of their bargain.
Madam Mayor, additional question. Item G about requiring the operators to control the speed. Again, I think we touched on this last month, and maybe this is a question for, for Mr. Sitaway. I really struggle with us establishing a speed limit for, you know, one operator when the public would be able to go at any speed they wanted on their own personally-owned scooter. So unless we've got a speed for these types of vehicles in our parks, which we don't think we do, or that's something we're planning to do, which I hope we're not, I really struggle with this particular piece. So I'm, I'm not sure if Mr. Sitaway wants to convey where the Parks Commission was coming from on this. And at least would help me to have some better understanding. Sorry, Emily. I know I asked that question of you and then kind of pivoted to Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Kavner. First of all, I just want to say thank you for taking the pause that you have to help us get this right. Because I, I think it's so important to have these discussions and try and get it right. So why a speed limit is, is kind of the question. Right now, there's only one park where we have a vehicular road in a park, and that's Kleiner Park. The vehicles in that park are, have a speed limit of 10 miles per hour. So they can't go 15.8 or shouldn't, according to the posted speed limit in the park. So their speed limit is 10. Why eight and not 10? Could be 10. What we were trying to do was, because these scooters are not limited to the road where the vehicles are. They're also on the pathways, where there's lots of people walking, jogging, doing whatever. Eight miles per hour, we, we wanted to have it fast enough that someone can still ride and get through the park and not have it be so slow that, you know, it's hard to balance. But, and eight miles per hour is the average speed at some, at which someone typically runs a 5K. You know, we're just looking for some guidance as to what, you know, what people using the pathways are going to be at. And most people are walkers, but we didn't want to limit it down that far. So what's a reasonable speed? I think that's a fine topic for discussion. So is eight the right number? That's the number we, we put out there. We think it's, it's slow enough to be safer, but fast enough to move through and, and be able to ride the scooter. When the scooters were initially deployed, there were quite a few complaints, concerns that came in. A lot from our park ambassadors that were witnessing the behavior in the parks, as well as some from citizens concerned about some of the behavior they were seeing. Large groups of kids on these Lime scooters at the time that were some near misses of pedestrians, just some general bad behavior. Why these and not the personal one, the, they, or bicycles, or, you know, we haven't had the, the issues or concerns. And when these were deployed, we had immediate issues. And especially if they're going to be deployed and parked in the parks and made available, there, there is an opportunity to encourage that use and behavior that does not exist with the personal one at your home. So I, I, I would just support the, the proposal as Emily has outlined it. I think it's the right balance of making it safer for everyone, but it's still allowing the use and the mobility options that we're, we're trying to strike the right balance for.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for Emily? Well, nice job in capturing everyone's comments and, and I, again, to the committee that kind of collected all of the different issues and tried to identify them to have the discussions in front of council. Our thanks to them as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll pass that along. It's really been a great team. If, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to enact this plan. Okay?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'm, I am generally supportive, but I, I really am in favor of striking item G. To me, it's no different than if we created a separate set of laws for people who rent cars as for people who drive their own commercial vehi, or their own personal vehicles. So I'm not supportive of, of item G. And then, should we bring something back? I am supportive of kind of a prorated amount, seeing how it sounds like that this won't begin until beginning of March. If we, if the council wants to move to this direction, kind of this one fee catches all, I think that we should prorate it for the first couple of months that the operators were unable to be in our community.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I, I agree. I'd rather strike it. But if it is going to be in there to maintain a provision that we can decide what a speed will be, but not to do one at the beginning and then if it, I mean, of course, at the beginning, there's going to be, like there was, it's a new shiny toy. It's going to be craziness. But if, if it continues to maintain that way, then, then yeah, we should be able to come in and adjust that. We keep it in there saying, we might do this, but we won't right now. And I totally agree on the prorated, especially if one goes away and another one comes in, to be able to have that as an option so that it's not a problem to come in any time of year.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I was wondering if we could hear from Chief Levy before we make any type of decision on this?
Absolutely. Chief, do you have comments you'd like to add?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Little Roberts, I don't really have any comments, so I'll stand for any questions that anybody have. If you're curious what I'm thinking or not, but no, we're ready to implement it and proceed, and actions are going to speak. I do have some concern, I do have some, some comments on the, on the speed in the parks. I, I want to be considerate to what the Parks Commission has to say, but frankly, we don't have any way to enforce that anyway. Saying we don't enforce it on bicycles, we don't enforce it on skateboards, we don't enforce it on scooters currently. So why would you pick one particular entity to enforce it upon? I'm not even sure we enforce it on the cars, on the, on the 10 miles an hour, because you'd have to look and see, can you legally enforce that, or is it just a park rule? And so I'm always opposed to laws or rules that say, hey, this is great, but we're not going to really enforce it. So if we're not going to enforce it, then it shouldn't be in there. So, but trying to be considerate to what the parks wants as well. It, it really doesn't mean anything to us, but it's, it's going to be hard to enforce unless you geo-fence the actual device where it's controlled, the speed's controlled without the operator. And then I'll stand for any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
As a path forward, because we've got publishing of an ordinance and public hearings, couldn't we move forward with the plan as Emily's presented? Publish the ordinance. You don't have to strike anything from this point because we're going to receive public input. Whether it actually comes out or there's a change made by March, we can let this hearing run its course and see if additional information supports changing it. I don't know if we have to make action right now to launch this process. I'd rather launch the process and get it going as presented on the screen.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
We had another ordinance that was planned to be over a few-month period and was going to have a public hearing and then gives a chance to make some adjustments. Well, as soon as the public testified, we voted to approve the thing. So I think if we're gonna, we're here, we're discussing changes. If she's going to finalize a draft, might as well have what we're all, we're all hearing today, what we want in it. Two of us say strike G and make it prorated. Anybody disagree with that?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Well, first of all, the only place that I was ever really, I think, in favor of geo-fencing is right adjacent to playgrounds where you might have really little kids that could get run over. As far as the speed limit, if they, if we want to use some of that money to put up speed limit signs in the parks, I would be in favor of that. Even though they can't be enforceable, it's, it's at least a suggestion that people to slow down in the parks. But I think the same speed should apply to anybody riding a scooter or bike or whatever they're riding through there, not just these rental scooters. So I'm either in favor of striking it or adjusting it to include just adjacent to or within five, a few feet of a playground area.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Appreciate, I think, Councilmember Borton's intent to keep, let's get this process moving forward and let's get to the public hearing. For, for me personally, I would want whatever we would be put forth in the public hearing to, at least for me, be something that I'm most comfortable with either adopting or been on the record to say I'm going to oppose it either way. So I'm supportive of moving things forward, however, but to include at least what I believe were the appropriate changes to make here tonight. It was brought here as a status update to gauge the feedback of city council. I've tried to provide that feedback, at least another other council members have indicated similar feedback, at least about the speed piece. So I think it'd be appropriate to at least have it represent the dialogue that occurred here tonight.
Okay. Mr. Borton.
Along those lines, the, the page eight G, I don't, I, I probably would have deferred to, to Parks' recommendation to include it. If it comes out, we can always address it down the road when this thing rolls out. So I'm fine if G comes out, quite frankly. I just want to get this thing going and, and enacted. As far as the proration, I think each year, proration coming into the program is appropriate to allow entry of new vendors perhaps in years to come.
No brainer.
But I wouldn't prorate or provide any refund.
Right.
Should it be terminated based on a breach. Agreed?
Yep.
Those two changes, I think it's great to go forward.
Okay, any other comments?
Madam Mayor, if I might just ask the question for clarification, just to make sure we get what council wants. What's been referred to as, as strike G, it's G1 that is specifically the, the speed limit issue. There are some issue, some areas where we don't think they belong at all that include the, the playground areas.
the, the playground areas of the regional parks, the dog park, we don't want them on the tennis courts. That's in there is G3. I'm just asking for clarification if you're also wanting that stricken or if the intent was to strike G1 specifically.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
My thought was, I heard G1, two and three is probably to help facilitate what we would otherwise require anyway.
Okay. Anyone disagree with that?
Madam Mayor, just my, my thoughts are if, if we've already got rules that prohibit bikes, skateboards, scooters, personally owned electronic scooters from being on the tennis court, from being at the Bark Park, and to me, it seems appropriate. I just, I hate that we are creating an extra regulation for a business that, again, if, if I owned it, I wouldn't be subject to. So I just hate creating special rules, especially those that are, in my opinion, extra, earn some an extra regulatory nature. So same for everybody, I'm great with it. If it's special rules, it's not just something that I get really excited about, as small and as, as dramatic as they may be. And maybe that's an opportunity for the Parks Commission to look at that overall, about what is appropriate near the Bark Park, what is appropriate near playgrounds.
But I think we are creating a special circumstance and they're parking it on public property. And you are creating that opportunity that, that no one's parking their private one there every day, all day, and making a profit off of someone renting it and picking it up. So it is different in just its model. I think the, the idea was around you're, you're creating more of a situation for these things to, to concern the ambassador's parents and, and the commission in particular as they, as they talked about it. So it is different than the privately owned.
Madam Mayor, I.
Mr. Kavner.
Agree, and the, the taxpayers are going to be compensated $25,000 for each operator because of that. But, but you, what I envision is, is that two people, one rents a scooter, one brings their own, and the one that brings their own is able to go defeat all the things that are trying to be intended by this one while the person who rented it is not. I agree, I don't think that they, they should do that. And, and in the ordinance, it looks like there's a hundred dollar fine if they're breaking rules, if they're parking them in the wrong place. And so what I, I, I think that if we are going to say we don't want scooters, we don't want skateboards, we don't want bicycles near playgrounds or on tennis courts or by the Bark Park, then let's just ban them for everybody. Oppose to creating, you know, two sets of rules that we've heard from law enforcement is going to be difficult to enforce already.
Mr. Burnt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I believe that we're in agreement that we're going to strike G1. However, I think there is a difference between having Lime or Bird, whoever it is, have, you know, potential of 350 to 700 scooters along public area as opposed to, you know, as I drive down the street, I don't see, you know, private scooters parked or, you know, on, on private property or public property or, I, I go to the parks and I don't, I don't see a, a ton of scooters or, you know, being utilized as much as maybe these, these Bird or Bird, or Lime or other potential scooters. And so I, I think that this is a difference, something that, you know, we haven't seen in the past other than the one timeframe when, when they were allowed to be used. So I, I, I think, I get what you're saying, Mr. Kavner, that, you know, you want to be able to compare the two, but I don't, I don't think that they're comparable because of the amount of scooters and the amount of vehicles or whatever that will be utilized in, in the, on the public pathways. So I, I think that, it's my thought.
So at this point, it sounds like the prorated is something I've heard the majority all agree with, and the removal of G1, it sounded like everyone was in agreement on. Is there a motion, further discussion desired?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we proceed with the proposed next steps as presented with the ordinance that Ms. Kane has drafted, which has been amended in those two ways today, at least for now, removal of G1 and the inclusion of a proration for inclusion into the franchise program. I think G2 and 3 will probably be discussed further and perhaps we'll get comment from the providers themselves on how cumbersome those provisions may or may not actually be.
So that last statement was part of your motion or?
It was a little editorial, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. Just trying to get clarity.
All right. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I don't, I don't know if this required action, but I'm, I'm supportive of the comments of Councilmember Borton, and if we do need to take action, I'm happy to provide a second, but I, I actually don't think it's, it's necessary.
I, I think it's great so that when we bring the ordinance back, we have clear parameters on what it will look like instead of our best guess. So I appreciate the, the motion and the second. Anything further in discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor. Sorry, it isn't listed as an action item to vote on.
Oh.
So we can't vote on it, but the direction is fine.
I think just that direction, it seemed good.
It was a ceremonial motion as well. I meant to say aye.
I forgot about the action item thing. Okay.
Right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Really great work.
I, I guess we did take out all question of what the intent was. So thank you for that and thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Kavner. Okay, item 9A is a public hearing that has been requested to continue to February 19th. This public hearing is for H 2018 dash 0121. I will open the public hearing and ask staff a little bit of the background of what the request is to continue regarding.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Item number 9A, Villasport, the applicant is requesting continuance to the February 19th meeting in order for a request for city council review of the commission's decision on the associated conditional use permit to be heard at that same meeting.
So they would like to have the CUP and the DA considered at the same time?
The city council review for the conditional use permit application and the development agreement modification, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone that is here in the audience for this 9A? Okay. It's hard to take public testimony without the applicant presenting the, the request and I apologize for the inconvenience. I guess I, I can't offer any further explanation, but if this council wants to hear it regardless of the request to continue, that certainly is their purview. And I would ask the, the council for your direction.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Person that's here that wants to provide testimony, going to be able to attend on the 19th?
Thank you, and we apologize for any inconvenience.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I move we continue item 9A, public hearing for Villasport, H dash 2018 dash 0121 to February 19th, 2019.
I have a motion in a second. I, I guess I would ask, do you want the applicant to repost this on the site or any notification? I waited until.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, you caught me in my mouthful.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm open to feedback from council. I don't necessarily think it needs to be reposted, perhaps a re-notification via our next door, and any contact that we've had from anybody who has sent in any other testimony.
I, I guess I'd ask Mr. Clerk, if the CUP is coming on the 19th, is it already going to be noticed on, posted and noticed at that time?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the council review application will be noticed for that date when they get everything submitted.
Okay. Okay, well, I have a motion in a second to continue item 9A to February 19th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9B has, is requested to continue to February 5th. The site was not posted correctly. This is about public hearing for H 2018 dash 0107. Staff.
Madam Mayor, council, staff really doesn't have any more to add on that. We, the city council can't legally hear this project because the noticing requirement was not met.
And that was the public hearing sign on the property?
Yes, ma'am.
So item 9B is, can't be heard whether you wanted to or not.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Just for clarification, and I think for those either watching online or here in the audience, is that a mistake, the city's fault or is that the applicant's fault?
The city does not post the signs.
Yeah.
That, Madam Mayor, I was aware of that. I just was making sure that for those watching, if, and if they thought the city was the one that made the mistake, that it wasn't our fault. The reason this isn't being continued because of the city, it's because of somebody else.
Thank you. Okay, we do need a specific motion to continue?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, then I will open the public hearing first on 2000, or on H 2018 dash 0107 and ask for a motion to continue to February 5th.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I move we continue the public hearing for Alicia Court, H dash 2018 dash 0107 to February 5th, 2019.
I have a motion in a second to continue item 9B to February 5th because of the posting requirements not being met. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9C is a public hearing on H 2018 dash 0125. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning, conditional use permit and preliminary plat. This site consists of 18.18 acres of land, zoned RUT in Ada County, located at 3880 and 3882 West Franklin Road. History on this project, multifamily residential project was proposed on this site last year that was denied by council. The proposed project is deemed to be substantially different than the previous project. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is currently high density residential, which is 15 and over, 15 plus units per acre. The applicant is requesting approval of a step down in density as allowed in the comp plan with council approval from high density residential to medium high density residential, which is eight to 15 units per acre, consistent with the abutting properties to the east and west, resulting in a proposed density of 13.09 units per acre. Annexation and zoning of 19.07 acres of land with an R15 zoning district is requested consistent with the requested step down in density. A preliminary plat is proposed, as shown there on the right, consisting of 67 building lots and three common lots on 18.18 acres of land in the R15 zoning district that is proposed to develop in two phase, two phases, starting with the front portion of the development nearest Franklin Road. If you can see this little dotted line right here, this is the first phase down here and then the second phase is to the north there. Access is proposed via Franklin Road and via the extension of West Perugia Street at the east boundary. Perugia will extend east-west through this site and stub at the project's west boundary. If you'll remember, the project to the east is the Silver Oaks Apartments, and then they had a self-service storage facility that was recently before you, that's directly to the east. An emergency access is proposed via Franklin Road near the east boundary of the site and also near the north end of the site to the west. And that is, if you can see my pointer here in this location and also right here. The entry street as well as Perugia will be public streets, the internal streets will be private. A conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily development consisting of 238 dwelling units on 18.18 acres of land in the R15 district. Site plan is proposed, as shown there on the left, and conceptual building elevations were submitted that depict how the site is proposed to develop with a combination of two and three story townhome style multifamily structures in groups of four, six and eight attached units, both front and rear loaded. Two-story units are proposed along the west boundary of the site, adjacent to the existing residential and agricultural property, and that is the Delinda Fourplex, Eightplex and Tucker Sixplex elevations that you see before you. Combination of two and three-story units, i.e. two-story on the ends with three stories in the middle, are proposed along Franklin Road, and those are, as shown there before you. Three-story structures are proposed internally, and those are the Dayton Six and Eightplex units as shown. Qualified open space and site amenities are proposed that far exceed UDC standards. A minimum of 3.19 acres of qualified open space is required. A total of 6.15 acres is proposed. A minimum of five site amenities are required. The following are proposed: an outdoor pool complex with clubhouse and restroom facilities and property management office; two children's play structures; three covered picnic shelters and pavilions with barbecue stations and picnic tables; a dog park; a half basketball court; two open grassy fields larger than 50 feet by 100 feet in area; benches and pathways throughout the site. Again, the, the open space here is, they're proposing almost double what the minimum standards are. Parking for the development is proposed in excess of UDC standards based on 238 two and three bedroom multifamily units. A minimum of 476 spaces are required, with half, half of those, 238, being in a covered carport or garage. A total of 603 spaces are proposed, consisting of 274 driveway spaces, 254 garage spaces, which are on the first floor of each of the units under the living units, and 75 guest parking spaces for a total of 127 spaces over the minimum required. Commission recommended approval of this project. Kent Brown, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. There was no opposition or commenting folks on this application. Written testimony was received from James Doolan, the applicant. He is in agreement with the staff report. There are, there were no issues, discussion, other than that, there wasn't any public testimony. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows: they were in favor of the single maintenance and management company for the overall development as proposed by the applicant; the walkable distance of the site to future employment uses within the 10-mile area; they were in favor of the design of the proposed structures with parking underneath the structures and incorporation of mews within the development; and concern pertaining to timing for this property to develop in conjunction with other nearby multifamily developments and their overall impact on public services. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation. The only outstanding issue for council tonight is that the applicant is requesting council approval of a step down in density from high density to medium high density residential. There has been no written testimony submitted since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Council, any questions? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
For the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho. Thank you, Sonya. She's a mind reader also. As you look at the site plan that's on the screen, let me quickly talk about the items that we heard from the city council and. and as we met with many of the city council members before resubmitting. We addressed each one of those issues so that they weren't a concern anymore. Originally, we were looking at doing this in a phased development. Sonia's covered that and described that. The concern was, is what that would do to your resources, police, fire, so forth. Realistically, with approval tonight, moving forward, we would be lucky to start doing vertical, the latter part of 219, maybe having the first occupancy in August of 2020 is where Phase 1 would come in. It's almost exactly half and half of that 238 units. It splits it almost exactly. But the swimming pool, the major amenities are built with that first phase, which I think is a plus. And then there's always that question of doing the landscaping along the roadway, and that would also be included in that first phase. One of the items was in the original design, which was down here, the very bottom right-hand corner. We originally had 20-plex buildings. There was concern that that didn't meet the flavor of what's along Franklin Road. So, with single-family being on the other side, and we removed that. There was also a concern that we didn't have any indoor amenities. So now with the clubhouse, we have the ability to have a fitness room and so forth. It's there, giving us more year-round amenities. I think many of these others, people are going to continue to use. Probably the biggest thing that we, that I see in any of the developments that I do is people walking. And this entire system allows you to walk out your front door and be connected throughout this, this neighborhood that is being developed here. There was a concern in the original proposal about a single management versus multiple managers. And, and we see the benefit of that. In fact, my clients have kind of adopted that with the projects that they're doing here in Idaho. There was a concern in the original design of a lack of a street appeal. I'm going to show you some pictures later on, but what's kind of unique about this design? Sonia, if I touch the screen, is it going to back one? What, what? Well, as you come in the main entrance, over here on the right-hand side, that's Franklin Road. It's the southern part of our site. You have the main entrance. The main entrance comes in to where the swimming pool clubhouse is located. If you look along that public street, the units all face that street. The front doors of the units that are there are facing that local street. There's a sidewalk in front there. One of the drawings that we're going to see later on show that that has some street appeal to it. Then across and to the upper part of the area where the field is, north of the swimming pool, that unit, those face onto that park space. So, most of the streets in here end up acting like alleys would. The street that is along Franklin, that's an alley. The street, the buildings as they face out onto Franklin, they have a street appeal. They have a streetscape with a front door, a sidewalk that's there for those residents. There's a large landscaping space. So, as you look at this, the development, you're going to see front doors that make this a little more as a good neighbor. The coloring on this shows that the two-story levels versus the three-story levels. So as you look along Franklin, instead of seeing a solid hedge of tall buildings, it drops down. So as the two buildings meet each other, they go down to a two-story. And you'll be able to see that in one of the drawings. Sonia was explaining to you, along the bottom of the screen here, we have the Delinda Building, and they back up. So their backyards of those two-story buildings are against the undeveloped property to the, to the west of us. And then, right next to that, there is a Tucker Building that the end of that unit is again two-story. So as development takes place to the west of us, anything that is abutting our westerly boundary is two-story. There's not a three-story building right up next to our neighbors. As you look along the east boundary, we have the Kennedy Lateral there, but we also have the fronts of the units facing there to the Kennedy Lateral with sidewalks and so forth that are in and around that area. Sonia, let's go to the next drawing. So, here's what we've described. You can see the streetscape. You can see where the pool is, and you can see the entrance in. And then the end of the building that's out on Franklin Road, it's down to a two-story on the end. And then, the buildings that are fronting the public street, they have a nice streetscape with doors coming out. And then, the park space that is to the top of where the pool and the clubhouse is, you can see how those front doors are using that park space and mews to come out onto that open space. So everybody in this development is looking out onto a park space, for the most part, in a traditional townhouse type of venue. We also have a covered picnic area that's next to the clubhouse, a tot lot area that's there. So there's quite a few amenities just in that local area. Next one, Sonia. Again, this is the Tucker Building. As you can see, the three-story in the middle and the two on the ends, and how that's the streetscape that you end up seeing out on Franklin Road. And again, along our westerly boundary, we're down to a two-story unit. The next one, Sonia. This is the other side of the building, the alley-loaded side, the rear-loaded side of that building. This is the Peyton that's in the center, where most of those muses are at. So the top-screen picture is what you see facing out onto those parks. The next one. This is the other side of that that would face back into the alleys. This is the Delinda Building that is along our westerly boundary. It's a two-story. This is the top one where the garages are. That's what faces the street. And the next one, Sonia, this is what is the back of the building that is facing to the west and the backyard portion of that building. Here's a colored rendering of that Delinda. And here's the area showing to the north of the pool and how those Peyton buildings face out onto those park spaces. Throughout this, as you go through, all the way through here, whether you're up at the very north end where the point of the development is, you can walk through green spaces all the way down to the pool and clubhouse. You can go east-west, north-south through the pathway system that's in there. And there's tot lots, picnic areas throughout the development, a dog park that's in an area. The only storm drainings that isn't underground is in the very tip of the point that's at the very end. The rest of that is all underground, not seen in seepage beds. I'll stand for any questions that you might have. I, I like this design. Part of the biggest reason I like it is that there's garages. And what I view that, for a renter, this is as close to them having a single-family home as possible. They have a garage. They police that to make sure that they're parking in their garage and so forth, that these garages are being used for that, that purpose. And we've tried to overpark. We've got over the amount of amenities, and we have the, over the amount of common area. In these individual areas, by breaking this up east-west with these muses, it creates little tiny neighborhoods within the development of the space where you can look out your front door and see your kids or... Another factor that needs to be talked about is that in this local area, with the businesses that are in, in construction currently in and around the cheese factory, this is going to be one of the closest residential areas for someone there. There's approximately 2,000 jobs between Amazon and the one that's going to the north of the cheese factory that are going to need places for people to stay. Plus, its overall location being close to the 10-mile interchange makes this a premier site for people to be in apartments. I stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Kent. Ms. Mylum?
Well, I don't have any questions just yet, Kent. I just want to say, what an amazing change. Good job, team. Really listening to what we had to say. The open space is fantastic with the walking path, the amenity package. Really impressed with the changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor, just one. Can you show me the Kennedy Lateral and the Purdum Drain and describe the fencing that's along next to it? I saw a condition that referenced mesh fencing and...
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have a, whether it's a solid fence and work with the ditch company to fence those facilities. Kennedy, I think initially, we showed like a rail fence, which obviously, that's not going to work. The Purdum is down here where those larger units were supposed to go in the very bottom right-hand corner. And it just barely comes into our sight. The whole portion of that ground, as you look at it existently, is sloping off. So we're going to have a retaining wall that comes up, and then on top of that retaining wall, we'll have a, have a fence. So, we'll fence, fence those with whatever the ditch company will allow us to do. Ideally, it would be solid, but...
Madam Mayor, on the Kennedy Lateral, is what kind of fencing?
Tall fence, safe for kids, see-through.
Is it?
You, you need to respond, please.
I can reiterate that. Tall fence, to me, means six-foot fence and see-through.
Madam Mayor, that, that's helpful. There's a condition of approval that I might be misreading, but it references mesh fence, which sounds like chain link. But am I misconstruing what that word means? And I'm looking at that 2.12 condition, which talks about types of open vision fencing, which might be mesh. I don't know what mesh is unless it's chain link.
Madam Mayor, if I may respond to that, Councilman Borton, that's our minimum code requirements, and that would be a chain, chain link fence. But wrought iron is certainly preferred.
Sure. And Madam Mayor, so you're not proposing, the way the condition reads then would be changed to reflect the representation of the applicant?
Chain link fencing meets the minimum requirements. If the applicant is proposing something more than that, they could certainly commit to that on the record, and then that would be what they would be required to construct. But chain link meets our minimum standards.
Madam Mayor, that, that was the question. It sounded like there might have been a commitment or perhaps some discussion you need to...
Well, the difficulty for me comes in is that the, obviously, the ditch company will allow you to do wrought iron. You can do a wrought iron six, six-foot fence. Generally, the reason that chain link goes in is that it's the preferred item of the ditch companies because of their burning. Yeah, we're open for either one. This is what my client's telling me, whether it's wrought iron or chain link.
Madam Mayor, and I appreciate that. I'm not necessarily trying to put you on the spot. It's a public hearing. You might have a chance to visit here. And I just want to make sure it's, it's crystal clear if there's something that's a commitment that's to do something more aesthetically pleasing than chain link that will clear up that condition to reflect what you propose. So, I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
There were no sign-ups indicating they wanted to provide testimony.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony on this item? Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, my name is James Doolin with FIC Development, 1338 South Foothill Drive, Salt Lake City, Utah. Just to clarify the fence issue, I think initially, we proposed a rail, open rail fence for visibility. There were some issues with, some concerns about safety for kids. And so the goal was to put in a six-foot fence. I think the mesh was in there for visibility's sake. We're open to fencing. If the commission would like to see a rail, I mean, a wrought iron fence, we're fine with that. Ultimately, our goal is to have a six-foot fence for safety. We'd like it to have visibility so it doesn't create an alley behind our project where there's the potential for people to hide or whatnot.
Thank you. Certainly understand. Any further testimony? Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Harlan Baldwin. I'm at 124 Fritz, Meridian.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks panel for allowing me to, to visit with you on this. I own property just west of this proposal. And my own question is, if the representative from the Nampa, Meridian Irrigation District has been, been involved in this?
Yes, they, they have, and, and they are an agency that gets the application, and they have had a chance to review it.
Okay. Reason I'm asking about this, because if you look on the map, that may be on the east side, drops down to the, to rebel tracks. That irrigation system goes all the way down there, and it cuts back down, going back to the south towards Franklin Road. And that's how the irrigation system's been for over, for over 25 years that I've been there. My question is, is that going to be converted to something different? Is that going to continue the same? We're talking about a fence, some kind of a blockade or something right in that area there. I was wondering if that's been addressed?
It sounds like from the comments that the application made, applicant made, is it has, and it's addressed in the conditions of approval as well, or the, the recommendation from staff.
Okay, then I understand. It's not going to be altered at all then? The folks that irrigate off this irrigation system here, is not going to be any change at all because of this established area?
A requirement for approval of developments is they have to deliver water to the users. So they can't disrupt that. In some cases, they can re-divert it. And I'll have the applicant comment on that when they come back up.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Borton? Sir?
Kind of in follow-up to... I was just going to, sorry, I was just going to respond amidst the application materials that we have, there's a letter of November 28th from Nampa, Meridian Irrigation District, which references their requirements, which become conditions of approval, which speak to protecting the easement and the waterway and the water delivery system that the mayor's referencing. Any encroachment without a signed license agreement is unacceptable unless they approve it. So they are involved in the process, the applicants, kept them in the loop.
Do I have access to that information?
Madam Mayor, certainly, yes. It's in the public record, and the clerk can provide a copy. The applicant probably can do so as well.
Okay. You got other questions?
Question?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are any further testimony? Hey, Kent?
I, I think you covered it...
If you'll restate your name for the record.
Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Councilman Borton, I believe that you covered it really well. State law requires us to work with the irrigation ditch company, that we need to continue water services that go through our site. We've asked not to pipe the Kennedy or the Purdum, but any of those other ditches you are asking us to pipe. We work with Nampa, Meridian and lateral users to pipe those facilities through our property so that it makes it easy for people to continue to water the way that they've been done. That's why state law is the way that it is, that it says that we need to continue water through our property. We're allowed, as the mayor commented, to manipulate that on our own property how we want, but we need to come out at the same places that we collect it and discharge it, so. I appreciate being able to do this project. I think that this product type provides the city with something different than parking lots with lots of asphalt. Having these garages is just something a little unique. I was recently visiting family in Logan. They have a lot different weather than we do. And I thought it was really interesting that most of the apartment complexes had garages. And it has to do totally with the amount of snow that they get versus what we get. And when you guys were talking earlier about the scooters and how much usable time that is, I was going, in Logan, that would be opposite because it's sunny that other part of the time and the rest of the time there's snow on the ground. So as we tease our relatives that we're mowing the lawn at Thanksgiving, they're shoveling snow, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Counsel, any questions? Kent, I would ask that you meet with the property neighbor and share the plans just to make sure he understands that his water delivery will not be interrupted.
I'm sure John Carpenter will do that, but we'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Counsel, anything further?
Madam Mayor? Excuse me?
Yes, Sonya?
There is one other outstanding issue that I failed to mention in my presentation, and that is the applicant is requesting a waiver to not tile the Purdum drain because it's not entirely located on this property and it is a large facility, large-capacity facility. So that is something that should be included in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Sonya, do we need to reflect the Kennedy lateral as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, no. The Council previously, it's been probably 12 years ago, approved a waiver for the Kennedy lateral to remain open and not be piped with the Silver Oaks Development.
Mr. Borton?
Do we close the public hearing on H. 2018-0125?
Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Just a quick comment to Kent, James and John. I think Genesis pointed it out first, to come back and provide a different application that takes into account a lot of the comments that were provided from staff and the Council and the mayor before is greatly appreciated. You've been creative and problem-solved in a way that has a much better project. So hats off to all of you. We appreciate your patience in continuing to work and try and find those solutions, so a job well done. As for some of the conditions, I think the Purdum drain remaining open seems to clearly be appropriate here. The findings that are set forth in the staff report for the annexation, the preliminary plat, and the conditional use permit, all are well-reasoned and make a clear record of what would support approval of this project. One question on the conditional use permit, Sonya, is are the renderings, all of the pictures that we saw, the renderings that we're referencing, some are black and white, some are the pretty color ones, is it everything or do we need to reference?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, they're all of the elevations that were presented tonight.
Okay. The black and white and color?
Yes.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, I'm just super supportive of the project as presented. Should clearly go forward in my mind.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
There's, if there's no other discussion, Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve H. 2018-0125, inclusive of the comments of the applicant with regards to the fencing. To amend that condition, I think it's 2.12, but whatever condition specifically references the fencing and the applicant's commitment there, and to approve the request that the Purdum drain remain open. I believe those were the only two.
Step-down.
Oh, and the approval of the step-down required for this application.
Madam Mayor, clarification. Did you, on condition number 2.1.2 on the fencing type, did you want it to remain with the mesh or did you want it to be wrought iron?
Wrought iron.
Wrought iron.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Just to echo Councilman Borton and add that, I mean, two applications ago, you brought us a fantastic project. The last application was a step up from that. Your frustration was palpable and I was with you. So thank you for sticking with us and coming back. And I, I mean, as Sonya was going through and I was checking the boxes in my mind, okay, two tot lots?
Two.
127 extra parking spaces, like...
Indoor.
There's literally nothing else that we could ask for. In the three years I've been here, there's nothing anyone up here has ever asked for that you didn't put in there and like quadruple it. So thanks for sticking with us and coming back and bringing us another amazing project. Come back again.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
Hey, guys, fantastic job. It's so awesome to see applicants listen and come to the table and to provide a project that makes sense for our community and good job. I really appreciate it and I hope that other applicants, other developers who are out there listening, watching, can really take, you know, you can take, they take your lead and learn from this process. You did a great job, listened well, and I appreciate it.
I guess I would just add my two cents. I would also comment on what Mr. Palmer said. I know when you left after the last application, there was a lot of frustration. But you have listened to all the concerns that were stated on the record and addressed the reasons for the denial. This is, this really has set a different standard. You listened about building community and a lot of the frustration in our community has been centered around apartments. You've shown how you can build a community with your open space, with the covered parking, with the different elevations, with the different product types in there. You offer a lot of different choices. You absolutely did everything that the Council talked about and that's admirable. You also even phased it, which addressed the concern of our ability to make sure as this is brought into our community that we are able to serve it. So your sensitivity to that is also greatly appreciated. So thank you for the time and thought that you put into bringing something back and what you did here.
Yes.
If there's nothing further, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 10A, under Department reports, we have our Police Department. Are you the budget presenter in all budget amendments? Lot for punishment?
It's my last one for a couple of months.
I hope everybody has lots of questions for you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Lieutenant Harper from Meridian Police Department, i.e. the uniform. I'm here to request moving a $2,500 obtained from a training class. It was a revenue that we obtained from a training class back in November. So actually, I'm not asking for money this time. I'm actually wanting to move this $2,500 back into our training, our training budget.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Lieutenant Harper? Make them good.
No teasing.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam?
Could you give me the names of each of the participants that these monies came from?
Madam Mayor?
I'm just kidding.
Mr. Palmer?
I move we approve the budget amendment proposed for $2,500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Oh, sorry, Mr. Borton. I saw the aye in your face. Okay, item 10B is under our Parks and Recreation Department, and I'll turn this over to Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here to ask for your approval for a net zero budget amendment for $108,566 that will move our insurance settlement money into our operating budget so we can make the repairs.
Any questions for Mike?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
And just to confirm, it sounds like you're just basically going to start this process in May when you, when you start the renovation of the Home Court?
Yep. Madam Mayor, Councilman Burnt, yeah, that'll be, it'll be done simultaneous, so concurrently with the Home Court renovation. Correct.
Okay, very good. Any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Milam?
I move that we approve item 10B, a budget amendment not to exceed $108,566, net zero, to the city.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10B. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
11A is ordinance 19-1807. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 19-1807, an ordinance filed H. 2018-0075, Oihei High School. Annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of the east one-half of Section 32, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 108.76 acres of land from RUT 2R8, medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, Counsel, you've heard this read by title. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam?
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1807 with suspension rules.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 11B is ordinance 19-1808. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 19-1808, an ordinance removing park alcohol permit requirement from Meridian City Code Sections 13-2-6C, general park regulations, and 13-2-8 regarding denial or revocation of permits and appeal, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I move we approve ordinance number 19-1808 with suspension rules.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Counsel, anything for under item 12?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Two items. One, after, after leaving tonight about the retirement of Commissioner Yearsley from planning and zoning, perhaps we could do something to recognize his service at the joint P&amp;Z City Council meeting that we have scheduled in February.
Great idea.
Mr. Cavanagh, we presented a plaque to him on, last week, before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And also, a certificate was presented also by Mr. Parsons to Greg Wilson.
Okay, fair enough. Ma'am, second thing, January is almost over, which means budget season will be here very quickly. Last spring, early summer, Council supported the decision to absorb the ward asset of Fuller Park. The discussion at the time was that the Parks Department was going to replicate the same process they went through at Fuller with Meridian Pool to bring us back some information. And so as we get closer to budget hearing, it would probably be appropriate to have that report from the Parks Department about what they have explored, what information we need to have available for ourselves as we move into our budget season.
Okay, I'll talk with our Parks Director and see where they are at.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, item 13 is executive session.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Move we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-2061B. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.